You're watching Access to LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 16th meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaportecounty.org.
As secretary, you were the one who's supposed to call the, um, roll call.
Oh, I did it. I was like, mess with it.
Do you call me to order?
I call it to order.
And then she asks for the roll call.
Here's the roll call.
Okay, so.
So I call it by name or just?
Yeah, yeah, by name. Are we all together now? Should we do one big inhale and exhale?
Well, I know who they are, so.
Faye, are you present?
Wait, 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 not yet. We're not down yet.
Do we do, we still doing the, um, can you come online? Are we still on?
We only if someone asks for it, do I put it out on there. But no one's on.
I'm on Zoom today.
So when no one asks for Zoom, you're not on Zoom.
So no Drew today, just Andy.
Exactly. Okay, so it is 5:31, um, calling our meeting to order for the Michigan City Commission for Women, November 16th, 2023.
And roll call. So Faye Moore.
Present.
Bonnie Schaaf.
Present.
Veronica, absent. Linda.
Here.
Oh, Linda came in. Sarah.
Present.
Jones. Lori Wink is here. Is Angie still our council route?
Well, yes, but.
For now until the end of the year?
Yeah.
Okay, so Angie, how's it going? Let me see. Okay.
Can you call Christina?
Oh.
Christina is called. Present.
Sorry, Christina.
All right, so we are dismissing Veronica and Albertine and Angie. Great, and now we'll look at our October minutes. We just need to approve those. There we go.
I was absent, so.
I was as well.
So I don't know whether you guys take this or not.
Can I move to accept? I move to accept the minutes.
Second. Second. Great. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Nice and easy today. We've got a nice and easy day. Um, all right, so the next thing on our agenda, which I'm very excited for, is that we have our guest speaker today, Shante Woferd from the Girl Coalition.
Do we do the treasures?
Oh, my gosh, I totally skipped it. See, I am too excited for the presentation. All right, treasures report, Bonnie.
Treasures report, there's been no change in disbursements or incomes, so the balance remains $15,103.04.
So if someone wants to make the donation to the Women's Commission, how do we go about that?
Well, they, um, we have, an ordinance was passed about four or five years ago that does allow for donations to the Women's Commission, and so, um, people would just send a check to the city and just put in the description that it's for the Commission for Women. Yep.
Okay. All right, we need donations, people, so we want to do a lot of programming this year.
Excellent. Okay, some good ideas.
Can I ask a question about the treasury? Do we have like a prudent reserve, which we do not want to go below?
We, yeah, we had voted last spring, when we had received a lot of grant applications for one year, we decided then, we voted that we would not go below 10,000. We would always try to keep 10,000 in the treasury, but, um, that can be changed by just a vote at a meeting, but it was something that we felt was needed at that time for getting, you know, six or eight thousand dollars in requests each month, and we knew that we'd made a point where we couldn't, you know, couldn't do that, so.
And we also knew that if we got below that number, because of the two, like, key events that we do produce each year will cost, you know, around seven to produce, so just making sure we have enough to do that, if that's what we so desire.
Okay.
I mean, that is all, again, up for, like I said, a simple vote of what the needs are for the commission or the community at that time. Right. We are one of the only commissions that does do fundraising, and it's generally been almost an every other year situation, um, so we put this year as that fundraising year. I think it's really important to make sure that when you, when the commission is doing fundraising, that it is for something, I mean, again, this is always up for debate on any of things, but that we are really clear on what our intentions are with those funds ahead of time, so that we, you know, are just clarity, you know, that we know we need, we have a big project in mind, we want to do 20,000 because we want to do something big for the community, or if it's just, whatever that is, that there can be conversation and dialogue about that. But the 10,000 is kind of key, um, you know, I wouldn't want to go below, too far below that, otherwise you can't print, and you can't, there's many things you wouldn't be able to accomplish.
Okay, good.
I do think when this commission first began, that the mayor did give the initial 10,000 donation to the commission, and we have not received anything like that, so I would say that this year might be a good time to go back to the mayor and city council and say, you know, kind of align, and I think the stars are aligning that way with Angie, the female in office, with the potential of what the growth is in vibrant Michigan City, that, you know, depending on where the focus and initiative is in this group.
So it's not an annual allocation from the city, we just have to?
No.
I think we figured because of our, the gala roughly cost almost that, so if we ever wanted to raise more money, we would need at least that cushion to put on another fundraising, like the gala, to raise more funds.
Yeah, we raised a lot of money. I mean, we did a good job, and we were able to give out a lot of money, and we also created two really nice events, so.
And the gala was 2022?
Yes.
I move to accept a treasures report subject to audio.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Uh, any opposed? Great, treasure reports approved. Now, we are on to our guest speaker, Shante Woferd from the Girl Coalition of Indiana. She's going to talk to us about their really amazing 2023 Indiana Girl Report. So you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies. I want to first say thank you for having me. I am excited to talk about the Girl Report and the initiative of Girl Coalition. Well, first of all, I am a mother, I have a daughter, and most importantly, I'm a woman, and as a community engagement specialist, I have been tasked to cover the report in St. Joe County, and we are an organization that was formed through the six CEOs of Girl Scouts, and they came together because there was a need that has been identified that our girls are not okay, and the way that they were able to determine this was we partnered with IYI, and I gave you, I gave you all an executive summary of exactly the key highlights of our report and our findings, but in our report, it wrote it down in clear data that we need to come together somehow and address these needs, and so Girl Coalition was formed, and with that, we had a process that we are working because we are here to gauge the community. We know that Girl Scouts have been a traditional program for over 100 years, but there needs to be some innovation in that programming, and we need to touch all of the young ladies that we know need love and support surrounding them. So the way that we are doing this work is, the Indiana Girl Report, we found out all of the girls in Indiana's ideas, needs, and concerns in their parents. Then we took it a step further, engaged the community. So on this sheet where this one pager says who we are, it breaks down our process, and our process is first learning. We did a landscape analysis where we just pretty much went in and broke down every statistic there was that was already presented, and then the next stage was engaging the community. So, okay, yeah, we can read numbers all day long, but we really wanted to get a personable understanding on what our community needs, and so in LaPorte County, we did some listening sessions with some churches, we did some with some youth workers, we did some with college, young adults, and also adolescent girls. That's how we're engaging our community. Now, with all of the findings that we have, it's time for us to be innovative, and so our girls, we identified 12 barriers throughout the 20 counties that we are in currently, and with those 12 barriers, we had to create concepts, concepts on programming that the girls think they want. We're not here to create something for them, we are here to create what they actually need. So we gauge them, and so currently, in our innovation stage, you have in your folder three concepts that are being currently evaluated to be concepted.
Can I get another folder? So, oh, you don't have all of them.
I probably have this, but I've got three.
Yeah, it's three. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Solving transportation, solving interest.
So the first one is the dual membership. The barrier that we're solving for is the lack of interest, and the lack of interest meaning that girls just are not interested in doing too much of anything, they have those phones, they have their tablets, and that's pretty much the extent of their interest. We know that they need more, and so with the dual membership, we feel that with Girl Coalition, we do not want to take girls away from the areas where they feel supported, but we want to provide support in our communities. So if there is an organization of young women that are being led, we want to provide support to that organization, and so that would look like coming in and offering curriculum if that's what they need, if they need support financially, if they need volunteers to help service more girls. That's what a dual membership concept would look like for our communities. We have the empowering educator concept as well, and this is just basically going to our teachers, our parent professionals, even our lunch aids, anyone who is in the education realm, because they have direct access to our young women and our young girls, and they may be the only safe person that they know, and so tasking them and asking them if this is something that could be incorporated in the academic realm. And then our last concept for innovation possibly is a feet on the street, and that's basically just advocating for Girl Coalition, getting the word, being present in the community, doing events, hosting events, bringing the community together, so that our families feel supported and our girls' needs are being met. So I also included, because we have already gauged, I also put this survey in there, if you all would like to put down your thoughts, your opinions, your suggestions, it would be greatly appreciated. Moving right along, okay, so to wrap things up, because I'm not much of a talker, I don't like to talk too much at all, but I do want to open up the floor for any type of questions, but before that, I would like to have, I have an ask for you all, and that is, would you all like to partner with us as far as working together on the initiative so that our girls are okay? And that would look like supporting one another at events, that would look like inviting one another, possibly becoming a volunteer, or making recommendations of someone that would be great to lead a troop, or work alongside some of our individuals that are tasked to work in these communities. So, um, let me see, what else? Community resources, connections. We want to meet people where they are. We want to make sure that our girls in our community has the support to be what they feel they need to be, or they want to be, and we want to empower them. So those are my asks, and if there are any questions or comments, please feel free.
Because you do LaPorte and St. Joe County, you do all of LaPorte County?
All of LaPorte County, but right now, I'm tasked to just focus on Michigan City because it is a more urban part of, yeah.
Okay. Do we have any troops in the, in Michigan City?
So what I have been told, that there are 43 troops between LaPorte County and St. Joe County, but when I gauged the community, there was no awareness of Girl Scout community. Yeah, they, I don't know any girls really involved in Girl Scouts. Small pockets, it's isolated in Michigan City.
And things like Boy Scouts is advertised in the schools, but I've not, I've never seen a Girl Scout leader come in.
No, and I will be completely transparent. I was a after-school provider, and our girls wanted Girl Scouts, but there was no one that would bring on the programming, and I took that initiative, I said, hey, let's provide programming for these girls, but the thing is, when funding is there, the programming is there. What can we do to make sure that program is sustainable? And I believe that that is a community call, like we all have to come together.
Do you think the change, because Boy Scouts is now open for girls and boys, if that's made?
We haven't seen any shift on our end. We haven't had any questions as far as like, boys joining us, but we are inclusive.
I'm just saying maybe that like, girls are joining more Boy Scout troops than Girl Scout troops.
We haven't seen that, yeah.
Where do you get your funding, Shante?
So currently, Lilly Endowment.
Okay.
Yeah, we were awarded $15 million. Well, the six CEOs, they came together to create Girl Coalition, and because of Girl Coalition, they were awarded that money.
And that's spread out over how many counties?
20.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, so there is a Girl Coalition of Indiana in Michigan City?
That's me.
Okay, so you're still looking for girls to join the coalition, or?
So there is, it's not that they would join the coalition, it was that, it's that we would partner with the community, so that we are bringing programming to girls right where they are.
So you're supporting other organizations that are already supposedly moving things along to just support them with?
Yes, so for example, I have met with an individual who has a girl group currently going on, and all she really needs is curriculum and support, and so in order to get that curriculum and that support, she's willing to partner with us, and our partnership would look like her being a troop leader, so that she has the training, she has access to those resources, those girls becoming Girl Scouts, but they are still a part of that organization. They just become Girl Scouts so that they can have access to whatever it is that they need.
Do you work with Boys and Girls Club at all?
I have not, I have reached out to pretty much every entity in this county, and I have not gotten a lot of feedback.
And would they, I don't know if they would, you're girls only really, right?
Yeah, we are, and from what I gauge, it's more STEM related right now, so they want to focus more so on the STEM projects and things of that nature, but we also have STEM programming as well that could be introduced.
And also, Boys and Girls Club has their own, like, program for females that they run, and they do.
Yeah, and then our, the Boys and Girls Clubs are different. Michigan City is like its own entity, and then there's the Northwest Indiana Clubs, and so with those, we are being welcomed with open arms in those clubs, so, yeah.
Do we have any strong girl groups in Michigan City?
I know of one, but that's why I'm here, I'm trying to find all of them, like, who, how can I be directed and connected to those individuals that have these organizations and just need support?
Yeah.
I have not yet to really find them, and so that's why I'm here too, like, resources from the community and these wonderful women that are doing the work, where are they?
Yeah, yeah.
There's a girl organization, Essent, is that all girls in here?
Essence Rare is, they just put on a scholarship, and it's for boys and girls.
The Debbie Todd Program.
And they do the Debbie Todd, yes, the Debbie Todd Fund and stuff like that, is what they do.
Well, seems like a real need, though.
Yeah, but you all, I have included, there is a card, a postcard, and my business card in that folder. If anything comes to mind, anyone, you have my contact information, shoot me an email, and that's my personal cell on there, give me a call, send me a text, I'm here, I have my feet there on the street.
And that's where, yeah, it's where the feet meet the street right now, then, because you've done the preliminary work up to this point, so you're poised and ready to deliver. Were there any needs that stood out, particularly in LaPorte County, that might have been different? Or it's pretty much?
Yeah, just the lack of trust, because individuals that have experiences with Girl Scouts, it has not been pleasant, um, some of the parents and some of the younger girls felt like, you know, this is something I really don't want to do, but what we found is not that it's the Girl Scouts, it's troop leaders, and it's volunteers, and so those individuals need to be trained and informed on how to deal with more diverse, inclusive, and create equity, space for these young ladies, yeah.
My granddaughter lives in Buffalo, New York, and when she was homeschooled, she was real active in Girl Scouts because they had, it's a big enough community, you know, that they have a lot of homeschool students, and so a lot of girls were in Girl Scouts there, so if there was a need, you know, a niche like that, something like that, that might help, and then also, I wondered if you had contacted Youth Service Bureau?
I would, no, is that?
They do teen court and school buddies, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, like, program, they're in LaPorte.
Yeah, I have contacted a lot of people. I had the pleasure of meeting with Chris, the president of United Way, and she gave, she had given me a lot of resources, Youth Services Bureau, but everyone has not, it's the end of the year, it's really busy, people wrapping up grants, theme event nation, financials, and I get it, but I continue to reach out, I continue to send emails, and one day, they will say, hey, this Girl Coalition has been emailing me, so let me respond.
You know, I have a suggestion, contacting the newspaper. It's LaPorte County Herald Dispatch, because it's, you've got an interesting program and substantive, and, you know, one article could really make a difference.
Thank you for that.
Get the word out, speaking as a former reporter, so.
They did have, they did have a nice article a couple, like a month or so ago, put the Girl, the Girl Report, like, really putting out that the Girl Report was out.
But I mean, Shante particularly.
Yeah, yeah, like, cover these years, and then they know who's in.
Yeah, personally.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, for sure. Yeah, we were, we just presented at the IYI Kids Conference this week, so like, the state is aware.
Yeah.
Yeah, they know.
Because we know there's a need.
Yeah, it is, yes.
Do we know, like, the breakdown of youth in our area?
Oh, I have all that breakdown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The numbers are alarming.
Yeah.
There is a need.
And the Healthcare Foundation of LaPorte is a really big grant source, and they, a lot of nonprofits plug into them, so a visit there might be worthwhile, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It seems so interesting, like, that now is the time that we're all trying to come together, like, with the vibrant Michigan City, and then it seems like there's all these areas where community needs to step up, so how do, how do we get community involvement, civic engagement, you know, here? And especially with young girls, because if we don't start getting more young kids involved, especially females, you know, we're continuing to fall down this slope here, so it seems so important.
I think they have a lot of things for, I shouldn't say a lot of things, but like, the Youth Service Bureau, YMCA, and I guess it's rare, it's boys and girls combined, but this is just going to be for girls, correct?
Yes.
So I think maybe that's where your little bump is.
Yeah, is that it's just exclusive?
Yeah, that it's just exclusive, because most of the things that they do have, they have boys and girls. And that's where I was thinking, there's just, there's been a big push of equality, so a lot of places are now doing, there's not just girls groups and boys groups, it's been a mixture.
And we have, you know, a policy where, you know, LGBTQ, we definitely support and are open to anyone who wants to be included in programming, but we know that Girl Scouts traditionally has been, you know, girls, but we're not closing the door on anyone.
School counselors.
Yeah, yeah, and the only thing that we, we hear from educators is that their places are so full.
Right.
They are extremely overwhelmed, yeah, and you can speak to that, you know, so, you know, let me ask you, how could we gauge a teacher or someone, someone that works in the education realm to become a troop leader, or a volunteer, or whatever?
I don't know, I don't have an answer for you, just because there's so many positions that are just hard to fill anyway, just even paid positions, so that's, that's the challenge of us all right now.
And they still have Safe Harbor, right?
Different schools have different programs, so Boys and Girls Club is at some schools, Safe Harbor's at other schools, just depends on the school.
Because at Krieger, now my granddaughter's at Krieger, and they, she's in the Tuesday, Thursday enrichment program.
Yeah, I think Safe Harbor does the high school, middle schools, and then Boys and Girls Club and Safe Harbor, some are at, like, I think, like, NAF, we have Safe Harbor, and then one of the other schools has Boys and Girls Club, I think, I don't know which ones have which, but they kind of divvy it up.
Well, it's also, like, my youth, that's what I remember, during the Brownies, and my mom and our neighbor led the troop, so that we had, you know.
Community.
Community, yes, in our neighborhood, yeah. So are all troop leaders volunteer positions?
Yes, yes, and that's pretty much, that's a barrier as well.
Yeah.
You know, parents, they have a lot going on, yeah, so, but although people have a lot going on, we still have to address the issue at the root, and we have to find time to support our young ladies, because we want them to grow up to be beautiful women like you all, that have worked hard to establish yourselves, and if our girls don't have the tools to get out here and be proactive and advocate for themselves, like you said, we're slipping down a slippery slope. and be proactive and advocate for themselves, like you said, we're slipping down a slippery slope.
Yeah.
So we, we have to make that time, even if it's just an hour on a Sunday in getting a group of girls together and meeting with them and empowering them. We have faith-based curriculum, so that's why I met with church individuals. So if if you have a girl group that you currently meet with and you need some additional curriculum, we have that to support you all. So, I mean, we're not closing the doors. We wanna open the doors and we want girls to feel supported in Indiana.
I wonder i- if a possible multi-partnership of, I'm just brains, or riffen, riffen, not right now, guys. Not thought through in any way, um, but that, what if there was like a girl symposium in Michigan City? Like, what if we could gather girls and, I don't know, talk about alternative job options? Support, I mean, and have like the various groups together, like.
Have you reached out to like AK? I think they, I wanna say.
I met with the superintendent, and she's giving me the green, the green light.
I wanna say they just did something. Cause I know, like, um, I wanna say it was Barker, obviously Daisy does a lot with that. She's got a girls group going to learn about different careers, like non-traditional, more STEM careers. Um, she does it every year, um. So the, the schools do dabble with it, but it's, I think, just the initiative of a teacher who just says, hey, I, I wanna try this, like.
Yeah.
She just, that's just how, that's what she does every, um.
Who is that?
Daisy Lee.
Oh, Daisy Lee.
Our new council.
Educator.
I went, my daughter's doing it this year, so, that's how I know about, I mean, I just now I know she does it.
She's gonna be busy though.
And then, like, I know, like, sometimes counselors will pull groups of girls and do like a girl session of some kind, but I don't know if there's like anything particular in charge of that. It's just the counselor might say, oh, I don't know, I could be wrong, maybe it is, I'm not sure.
You're right, they have a, um, a group that meets at the high school level. I think it's like Change to Mine or Be the Change, or it's it's something along that lines. And it's a student-led. They have overseers, but they have those officers that are all student-led and they come together during school because after-school programming is not feasible for them because they have other responsibilities as high school individuals, so.
I think that's a key, student-led.
Yes.
Cause that really, you know, gets them active instead of adult telling them, well, you really need to do this.
Exactly, yeah.
What's the age group? I just, I just said you had the high school girls. But what age do you start and what's your cutoff?
Kindergarten, ten, twelve.
Ki- kindergarten, twelve.
Yes, yeah.
So you have all the school-age kids?
Yes.
Cause I was trying to think of, when I was in scouts, I thought we had a cutoff, but we had the.
And you was in where?
Scouts.
Oh, yeah.
You had the little girls. And you had girls that I thought we were at a certain age that you didn't. Then you had the older ones, like part of what, singing sands or?
Well, that's one of the changes, right?
They have cadets, they have, like, yeah, it's a lot of different branches in those Girl Scouts. And when I met with the superintendent, she had expressed her, her regard to Girl Scouts because she had been a Girl Scout from kindergarten all the way up to high school. And but she was over in the Detroit area. Another young lady I had met with, she was a Girl Scout in the Detroit area and was a Girl Scout from kindergarten all the way through high school and had taken trips and things of that nature. So they had great experiences, but, you know, to be transparent, they were led by women that looked like them. So programming was very impactful, and now we want girls to have the same type of programming, but it has to come from volunteers that are intentional and really wanna see the change and be a part of this change, that's necessary.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that you are doing this good work. And that you're really pushing this, um, uh, this in our community and that it is interesting to see all the, or hear the roadblocks right now, which is just, again, just shocking. That it's hard to, that it's just the evolving of time, what, where people put their energies and how, also COVID knocked us out of doing certain community events and programs. So how does one re- re- reemerge or come back to the idea of, of really community time and together time versus just virtual time?
Yeah, and imagine the girls that went through that, like, freshmen's in high school who had to isolate themselves, and so they don't even have those selves, those social skills. They really don't know how to integrate and then to come back into school and learn social skills that you thought, you know, you would not have to tap into, but they have to relearn them, and it's scary for some.
Yeah, scary for some adults.
It's, yeah, so true.
Shante, don't, well, there's Girl Scouts of America, right, that's, that's still the umbrella.
Yes.
So they must have a database on different scout groups in different areas, right?
Yes.
But they don't, there's really nothing here in La Porte County?
As far as troops?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not privy of them, and no troop leader has said, hey, I'm the Girl Scout troop leader, but my council leader is, um, over the Northern Indiana Michiana Council, and no one has provided me with the troop information. No, so I haven't been able to directly reach out to troops. Um, that has to be done within that, that council.
So you know that we, you know, I'm on the Dudes Arts Foundation, and we got a grant, as, actually, it's from Master Gardeners, to do a project with Girl Scouts. So the woman that headed up that project reached out to a Girl Scout troop, and she got Girl Scouts involved. I mean, I can find out more about how she connected, but.
That would be.
So I know there is out there.
Yeah, they are out there.
And they earn badges and stuff still.
Yes, and still badges.
So they need to have certain, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah, who sells cookies around here, do cookies?
Who sells cookies?
Oh, I see cookies all the time.
There was like an owl or something.
Yeah, they weren't.
It's, it's around.
I've not seen a Girl Scout out.
I haven't either.
I've seen say, go online, and I'm going online.
Yeah. See, it doesn't seem we should have to work that hard to help Girl Scouts.
I know, I know, but that's our reality, you know?
It doesn't have to be a Girl Scout, could be any.
Girl group. Yes, any girl group, yes, 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 any girl group. I'm really looking for girls who are not Girl Scouts.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I really would like non-traditional Girl Scouts because we know that, um, some girls feel like they've been left out. And so we just wanna let them know that, hey, we're here and we are creating programming so that you feel supported. I see your wheels turning.
I was just talking about like dance studios. You know, like, um, if there was a way to offer support there.
It is.
You know? And they're getting.
When you hear Michigan City, you know, there's some.
I used to teach in, um, La Porte, Works in Motion.
But isn't there a dance studio here in Michigan City?
I just drove by, there's, there's one that's now offering salsa classes. I was like, what, on Wednesday nights? For adults, actually, I was like, oh, let's go here and check it out. So there's two right now, actually.
Dance studio, I thought it was closed.
There's Stepers. Cause we can tell what their mission is.
Yeah, and they're boys and girls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's where you get that a lot of these things now are, it's geared for both.
Sure.
All genders.
But I think there's another girl, there's another, um, troop, it's all girls. Someone's church, is it that red door, Red Steppers? One of the churches here.
And what have the Hope Center have? What program, youth programs do they have?
They, they have the Fly High, Fly High Youth, but that's boys and girls in there also.
Think that that community center would be a key place to start some. But again, you're not looking to start it, you're looking for someone to step up into that or to create the group, or the group is already there to give this support to, understand.
Well, that's where you're looking at, if things like the after-school programs, you know, you have the mix. You know, if you're doing a group of some kind for, for girls, there should really be something also in place for boys. And.
At the same time. And mandates.
Probably isn't, you know?
So, Boy Scouts are not in Michigan City area schools anymore?
I don't know.
No, I just, I don't know. Okay, yeah, I, I used to be a Boy Scout leader as well, so I had two boys, that was my first one, so. When there's all, when there's a need, that's just who I am. I'm going to step up to the plate. And I know that in Safe Harbor, like after-school program, there could be, you know, a little niche carved out for girls to be able to meet with someone. It's just all if, if that site coordinator can find the time and space for that to happen. And I have yet to meet with, um, the director over Safe Harbor.
Brenda Johnson.
Brenda Johnson, yes, so we've been emailing back and forth, but we all know how hectic life is, so.
Yeah. I think dance studios would be a good route, a good place to go to, cause there are already dance teachers. You know, that they, they could gather their kids on a Saturday or some, I mean, in a different date than their dance class.
Yeah.
And really create something.
I agree. I spoke with, um, the Director of Education at the Vesnik Center, and that is something that they are looking to get into, is creating an opportunity for dance. Because even when we did our listening sessions, the girls said they would like to have more arts, more performing arts, you know, and what that look like is different for each child, but to have, you know, accessibility to that would be nice.
And they have a strong teen group, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, in Levesny.
Okay.
Teen arts group.
Oh, yeah, their arts program is so good. Those kids are, I really appreciate every year when they highlight the, the teen artists. And they're so articulate with what they're doing and that, yeah, they really do a good, good job with their kids, their teens program. Okay, all right, well, you, you got the hard road, and we appreciate you doing it.
Yeah, but I appreciate you all and everything that you've done to pave the way that allows for us to step into this space. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some sort of bits about the work.
Thank you. We'll keep brainstorming for you.
We've got you contacted us, so it's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Is there, could you email this survey maybe to you and that? Cause I'm not gonna be able to fill this out.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
If you want, that way then I can do it later and get it back to you.
You have my email, you can scan it and.
This might be good for you to get to, for some of your teachers to fill out.
Yeah, just to get feedback.
We love feedback. Oh, you can't do that, sorry, yeah.
A little bit of a separation between.
Um, all right. Um, back to our agenda, and I just put this, this next category in here just as a conversation. Um, because, and I'm gonna kind of switch my six and seven here. Um, that we are transitioning to, you know, a newer commission in twenty twenty-four. January is when we vote on the new officers, um, and hopefully everything will run smoothly in the mayoral transition that we potentially could have the two mayor appointees at that time, but I'm not actually sure. Um, how.
So the ones that's leaving, um, are you guys all mayor appointees?
So Bonnie and I are mayor appointees. Um, Albertine is minority health and, um, so she does need to, we still need someone from minority health to be on. Albertine, or Veronica is the other one who was, term was up, but she is staying, so that's terrific, and I think she'll be a good.
Who's gonna stay?
Veronica.
Veronica, no.
Okay.
Um, so right now you have Lori, Fay, Linda, and Sarah. You guys will be continued on Veronica. We still need a city council appointee.
Well, they do that every year.
We've been short on that for.
The, the first of the year.
The first of the year, they redo those, well.
So great, so then maybe that position will be filled, because it has not been filled yet on our.
Do we need to approach Angie and recommend commissioners? I think.
Yes.
We had talked about that, I think, at the retreats. And, cause you, by the way, you and Bonnie and Albertine won't be at the January meeting?
Correct.
Right.
Right.
So we'll be like.
Yeah, but I have to get all of the treasurer, treasurer documents to the new person.
Right.
And I can prepare, last year, Sher prepared a, um, a, the treasurer's report as of December thirty-first, so I had that to begin with, but when I came to the meeting in January, there was no treasurer's report for January, maybe, and there was, you know, I, so now that we should try to figure it out, yeah, before then, if we can. But if we can't, I don't know, I can bring my.
So you do come to the December meeting, is that the way it is? And then, then January you wouldn't be at?
I think in December, we used to really decide who would be elected in January.
That's what I thought we.
Yeah, it would hope.
Yeah, I thought we did a slay then, December.
So that we knew, and then, oh, and I know, then the president would come and would just open the meeting, and then we would immediately have the election of new officers, and then the new president would take over.
Okay, that's good then, yeah.
That's how we've done it the last several years.
Well, cause Jan-, uh, Angie takes office in January, right? But I think we could prime the pump with her and say, you know, we've got, you've got two vacancies and who's who we're thinking.
I, I, I mean, I did send her a note just saying that she did have to appoint you.
But Christine, when you got on, didn't someone kind of recommend you to get on?
I, well, I first came on as a nonprofit, and I wasn't a mayor appointee, I was a city, I, I don't even know, actually.
But someone sent, prompted you to get on, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there, cause that's where.
Yeah, 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 Karen, come on.
Before you got off of the board, you tried to find somebody.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense to me.
That was in your area and tried to bring them to the meeting, so there at least know what went on, and then we usually would have the forms for them to fill out.
Yeah.
Oh, and then, uh, that made it so much easier and quicker to.
Yeah, I mean, I do have someone that I have in mind, so I think would be great.
I have someone in mind too.
Yeah, okay, so maybe you tell me yours, and I'll tell, I'll send Angie both of our.
December meetings.
Just send that to me, um.
Yeah, you can invite him to the December meeting then.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Okay, great.
Cause I thought I was coming up, I had somebody, but then they backed out on me anyway. But they were supposed to be here today and, um, next month, they were gonna come November and December, so they could see how the meeting went. And, um.
Okay, so I'll make sure I tell Albertine that too, that we need, that we'd like to bring our supposed.
Who you think would like to take your place or.
But, you know, Angie might have someone else's ideas.
That's how Linda's. That's how Linda got all this.
I know. We were there, I was worried you weren't getting enough people, so.
Linda, you represent who?
She is, uh, she is our, she is a commission.
The commission's voter.
Oh, yeah, okay. There has been some problems on the paperwork because it says you were a city council appointee and you're, you were not, so we.
You're our appointee.
Thought we fixed that, I should probably go back and talk to get about that, actually.
Who was the city council?
We, we are missing a city council, we have been missing that for like six months.
Okay.
And because we had a person who nominated, who wanted to, but then it never went through. And so then we were just kind of waiting to see what was gonna happen.
So the city really is coming up with three.
So they made two, well, Ver- Veronica is city, right?
And Veronica's staying, so she's.
I mean, she's staying, but she was a council.
City council appointee, yeah.
Was that a league city council?
No, she was in legal, when it was.
Brothers.
But that is to the council, that is, that was to. But that is through the council, that is, that was through the council, though. The legal women voters is through the council.
I thought it was through the legal women voters.
Yeah.
It's through the legal women voters, but the council has to approve.
Oh, okay.
The council has to approve.
She represents.
Well, the council really has to approve all of them, don't they?
Oh, do they?
No.
Probably not the mayor.
No, not the mayor, just the council.
And not necessarily even our commissioner, but she was appointed by the city council, she did go through that phase.
That's why everyone's supposed to fill out one of those forms.
Yes, everyone fills out, but that form is like nothing. It doesn't even actually give you enough information to tell you who this person is.
But for some reason, if you do the form online, it doesn't make it where it needs to be, because I have an issue with that.
Exactly, no, it doesn't, yeah.
Um, or it's, they're they're like, well, we don't have anything from you, I'm like, I know I filled it out.
Yeah.
So, it just, there's something wrong with the technology in some somewhere.
And I had to copy them and forward them and all sorts of things, but they still.
Okay.
So, I will ask Gail about that. So, just keeping our, you know.
So, in total, we need three people in January to be.
Well, four, isn't it, because the council, minority health, and then the mayor.
Four, yeah, four.
Two from the mayor.
The council, the, yeah, the council liaison is not a voting number, is it?
No, well, we just, oh, no, no, but we have a city council appointee that has been missing. We have minority health, the two mayors, and then whatever the city council appointee is.
Well, yeah, and that's been Angie, but we, yeah, but she's just liaison.
Yes, yeah.
But we do actually have a city council rep that they named, that they named.
The liaison. They named, it's the same person, it's either Angie was the liaison, it is.
Oh, okay.
No, but you said that there was somebody that the council never appointed, right?
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes, we are four people. We've been short one for months and months, a long time.
And that was the city council person?
Yes.
Not Angie?
No.
Yeah.
She's the liaison.
Right.
It's just a city council appoint someone. And usually, it's a smooth process, like what we're saying, like I sent Leslie's information in like three times, it just never went through.
Leslie.
Yeah, there are one person who.
Person who, who person who wanted to be on.
Oh.
Um, so, we just just need to keep going with.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if she wants to or not anymore.
So, the meeting times.
She's efficient.
It's not a good time for some of the commissioners.
What's that?
You said.
Oh, so the commission meeting timeline discussion was just, do we wanna meet, does this commission want to meet twelve months out of a year?
Oh, so we don't have to.
Do we want to shorten the amount of time?
Maybe the new commission should decide that.
That's what the new commission, I'm just putting this on here as agenda item for the new person, like.
Yeah, the new agenda for.
Yeah, it should be an agenda item for the new.
You, so, but I I just want to bring it up is that as we've run now, you know, is it can evolve, this is this is an amoeba, right? That we, that people that come and go, flow, who who does what, who brings more to the table is the the thing that that is isn't flexible. So, this commission meeting timelines, it's too much to always meet in the summertime when people miss a lot or what, you know, do we want to meet then? Do we need to meet then? How many times does this commission need to meet? What are the goals that you want to continue with? Is there the legislative updates that Bonnie helped create last year? Do you want to keep that going? Is there's, like, maybe the new city council liaison wants to be more involved legislatively? All, there's so much that can be determined in the next, in January, February, for how this goes forward. This brochure that we created really does lay out exactly who we are, what we do, what our goals are. And that truly, we have three signature events that happened so far. Then in this, 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 the ten years of this commission, there's always been an International Women's Day, an Equality Day, and our annual meeting, right? The the community projects, what that can can change, can create, you know, the goals, identifying needs and create awareness education efforts, identifying available resources, services, and collaborative collaborate with providers, advocate for pay equity, better healthcare. How do you want to do this? How does this women's commission want to go forward with these goals?
What is the annual meeting?
That was our September meeting.
Oh, our retreat then?
Our retreat is the annual meeting.
Oh, okay.
And most of those things, we have done that by having different speakers come in every month, because even with um, um, Ms. Shante Wilter.
Yeah, the guest speakers are great, I like the guest speakers.
Because that's that's how we've been meeting the community aspect of it.
Yeah.
Because we've been bringing information to the community.
You could literally do every fourth meeting was an open meeting. Like, what if more people were here to see the guest speaker?
Well, aren't we supposed to be an open meeting, Angie, and that's why we are being two?
We are, and we're supposed to be inviting people, I do try to invite people, but getting them to come is another.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that might be an interesting new trajectory of the commission, because our roundtable went so well, right? So, we know we're gonna create another one in um for March eighth, International Women's Day, Inspiring Inclusion.
I have a, I have a question about that, but I don't know if you want to talk about that yet, so.
Well, so what I'm gonna talk, so then.
We'll get down to it when you.
Um, one of the things that happened at our last one, our last International Women's Day event, was two people came up to me, Angie was one, and um someone else said, can we do these more often? Could we create roundtables more often? And I was like, well, yes, you know, we are all volunteers, and we, you know, again, appreciate everyone's time and energy, you know, it's fantastic. So, what, you know, that could change, maybe our meetings become.
Roundtable.
A roundtable once a year or a quarter, however, you you all get to determine these new opportunities.
The the thing about the, our meetings, though, they're supposed to be limited to an hour, so we wouldn't be able to do a roundtable in an hour.
And how many do we have to have, is there?
Does it say that?
Well, that's the timeframe, Angie, isn't that the timeframe we have is an hour?
No.
No?
I really don't know.
No, it doesn't say anything about the timeframe.
Oh, okay, so then, yeah, then we could definitely do that.
I have a question with.
I don't know how Drew has it on the schedule.
Huh? He doesn't know how to do that.
See, we've been trying to go to a scheduled meeting that everybody knows what time a certain meeting is. Problem is, you always have certain meetings that go on and on and on forever.
Yeah.
And so, he's been trying to have those, get the members of those meetings, get their meeting down to a certain size.
Oh.
So, we can have them like every Tuesday, this meeting come on, and then every Wednesday, that meeting come on.
Oh, I see, I see.
We, it's pretty much, we've got it right now, but, you know, there's always like, you know, county council can go for three hours, or Michigan City, city council can go like.
Well, that's the only one that I know that goes past an hour.
Oh, commission, that, that's another one that could.
How many commissions have to be filmed, because we were wondering if we have to be filmed.
Oh, he's not gonna.
We're gonna talk about it.
It is.
Is that, who determines that?
Yeah, I really don't know about that one, because it does change.
It does change.
It did change, like, we used to do Barker.
Yeah, I was on that board.
Right, and then all of a sudden, they said, we don't want your, don't want to have filming.
The city wasn't, the city wasn't part of it anymore, the city in the Barker.
Right, that was before that, that was before that part, but the previous director, she didn't put a lot of role by that.
Jessica didn't, mom, but anyway.
No, I think that was the director even before Jessica.
Yeah, I mean, we, I did engage about that, because we talked about that at our annual meeting, about not wanting to be filmed anymore, and I got one answer was, yes, we could, that that we didn't have to be filmed anymore, and then someone else said, no, we did. So, I think there's still conversation about that.
Who were the someone's?
Um, well, Angie said, yes, that's possible to get to not be filmed, and then, um.
Look, I I do know that, like, several meetings in Michigan City that we've been uncovered.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, I had a quick question with the reappointments, if we've had a vacancy for months, we've had applicants for months, and it's not being taken care of, when it comes time where we need to fill those four spots, because if one of us is sick or can't be here, we don't have a quorum, because somebody else is not getting those appointments taken care of. So, we gotta work on, like, whoever's in charge of doing that has gotta be on it for January, otherwise, we're not gonna have enough some pot, potentially, to even have a meeting, even if we wanted to.
Yeah.
If one of us is out of town or sick, because there's only five of us, or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's supposed to be total of nine?
Yes, total nine.
I think Angie is, because we have to have five that are here.
Probably, or maybe.
So, if we only have five of us, and one of us can't make it, then it's automatically, we can't have a quorum.
Well, exactly, yeah, right.
And and as we know, just as you guys were just saying, January, which is just right around the corner, and then February, March, and that's International Women's Day. So, there does need to be some kind of um forward motion on on whatever that is by, I would say, January. So, next month, we should have.
Well, because next month, we have to have our people, and then.
Yeah.
City council has to approve those people in January for us to have our February meeting.
Linda and I came forward and said we would work on the International Women's Day, but I had no idea. Where did the Inspire Inclusion come from, and is that set in stone, and what does it mean?
That is the twenty twenty, oh, yeah, you weren't here, were you here last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, so twenty, twenty, that is the International Women's Day theme for twenty twenty four. So, if you go to the International Women's Day, which I um I can pull it up, is Inspire Inclusion, they give you program ideas or whatever, but to me, Inspire Inclusion is an incredible theme for this year, and especially since we just, I think that we determined at our annual meeting that entrepreneurship is our focus for twenty twenty four.
But did we decide that officially?
We never voted, because we don't vote at our annual meetings, I suppose we would need to vote on that.
That's another thing to put on the January agenda, don't you think?
So, it seems like, uh, for some reason, I put our next meeting as January, I didn't put a December meeting.
Yes.
Sorry about that, guys, gotta have a December meeting.
You should put a subsequent to that one, right?
I did that wrong, I mean.
To me, Inspire Inclusion is awfully broad. You know, if we had one on women's entrepreneurship, that would be a little.
But they have, but they have program ideas, and we do, every year, we do follow the national, the international women's day.
What was it last year?
Because that's what, embracing everybody, yeah.
So, like, the umbrella is Inspire Inclusion, but we could still inspire inclusion through entrepreneurship.
Yeah.
I cannot say that word.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be minority health last year.
Exactly. Which was equity, but it was equity, you know.
So, yeah, the Inspire Inclusion is our, is the umbrella.
Yeah, so, you know, what I've, I I think, you know, um, and for myself, just thinking through things, a great roundtable, well, one would be that Liliana from the Michigan um City Economic Development, she just got.
I think we should invite her to the Jan, December meeting, but we might have too much to do.
I don't think we should invite her to our December meeting, but I think we should engage her, we should start to engage her as being a potential speaker at the March eighth event.
But if we're having roundtables, we'd need to have more than her.
Right, and so, uh, what I've been noticing around Michigan City, and I don't know if if all of you have, you know, I had a studio space on Franklin Street, seven twenty two. And what I've noticed is, there's a lot of new businesses coming in, there's a lot of new um female African-American businesses opening up in our area, I don't know if you've all noticed this, it's really incredible, it's really fantastic. So, and, you know, Annie that just took over Lake Shore Coffee, right, and there's been tons of changes over there. So, you, there's all these entrepreneurs right under our our foot, so we have the Michigan City Business Association that, and and the Vibrant Michigan City Plan, which is all about economic development. This can be a really special event if we focus on people who are making a difference here now. Because right now, there's this change, this, everything's happening, the train, da 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 da. A lot of companies that aren't from Michigan City are gonna come in, because there's gonna be opportunity here. So, how do we make sure that we continue to support the local entrepreneurs in this area that are already started right now? And 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 kind of continue to flourish that? There's all sorts, I mean, and how are businesses inclu, in creating inclusion in Michigan City? And not.
I think that has a lot to do with just advertising in general, like, just from my perspective personally, I don't know a lot of places, because I don't, I'm not out and about. I'm a homebody, we've got kids, we're always doing activities with them. But if we know of someplace, and it's just my husband and I or something, we'll say, hey, let's go try this place out, but we have to know of it. Like, if we don't hear about it, we're not just out venturing, so, oh, that place is new, we don't notice that. So, getting the word out that these places are there.
I think it's an opportunity to shine a spotlight on women who are in business, and what are their needs, what, you know, how can the Michigan City Women's Commission um contribute to that, so.
But there are a lot of, you heard, there are a lot of um startups with women, and I think that's a great theme, we can highlight the different ones, so, whether it be like Hispanic, or blacks, or white, you know, just maybe one of, even, what what obstacles did you overcome? To to get your style, what are you, what's what's out there? There are a lot of, I was just riding around, I was like, where did this business come from, what is this? And they're just, they're just tucked away in little places that no one really knows about. And so, I think that we have an opportunity to highlight those little businesses, maybe we can focus on a few, and then, um.
I think it would be amazing if if, you know, like, with this vibrant Michigan City report and everything, you know, we know Michigan City is one of the most diverse cities in Indiana, right? What, and and we know, like, and Franklin Street's on this change, and there's an already change happening. Wouldn't it be cool if, like, it really did integrate on such a high level? Or became a more focused in one way or another, it doesn't matter, but that that it is the local community creating the change again versus somebody else coming in. I think it's really important, I think, to shine that light, to bring more awareness to who's here and who's doing it, you know. If we can get Denise Ship on the commission, not only, or just have her as a speaker, as a Michigan Business Association.
I guess the feeling that International Women's Day, we had more than one speaker, at least the one last month.
We did.
I've been to one, I've been to one before that only had one speaker, but there were a lot of presenters, like.
That's on that help.
Yeah.
That was on help, and we did have a lot from the help.
So, I mean, this is something you you, you know, the committee should brainstorm on, like, do you want it to be one speaker, do you want it to be a roundtable? I think there's, there's the, you know, even a woman from, um, why am I blanking on her name right now? The um Michigan City Business Association, the round building.
Comer.
Katie, yeah.
Oh, she were a comer.
She were a comer, like, having her talk, I mean, yeah, you know, you, there's like a a number of people, and what I always find fascinating is that Michigan City always has strong female leaders, right? It's so interesting.
We had a mayor that's.
And 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 so, again, highlighting that at that, at this event could be good.
I think that we should vote, and I think that in the past, we've always done this, that by this time, we have voted on what our budget, theme will be next year.
Yeah.
And I think we could do that right now.
And we need to, yeah.
Really be getting into this discussion even more now, and and at the December meeting too.
Yeah.
If you wanna, do you wanna do that, I mean, I, I won't be on the commission then, but.
Well, and March is coming up, and I mean, if Linda and I are coming up with some, we need to have a focus
Help you, yeah.
On what the commission wants.
I'm happy to meet with you guys December, so that we come in a little more informed for the December meeting. But I do think it'd be nice to make the motion, do we want to, um, is it entrepreneurship the theme for twenty twenty four?
Women's entrepreneurship.
So, entrepreneurship. So, women's entrepreneurship. I move that we adopt the theme and the focus of promoting women's entrepreneurship in twenty twenty four.
Second.
Bonnie and Lurch, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that's a good step.
So may, so subcommittee topic, maybe, we know that Nikia can do this. I, we need to confirm with her again. But do we wanna set just a, a date where the three of us can get together to talk through ideas, subcommittee?
Sure.
And I think we need to change the date of the meeting in December, although it'll take, because it's the 21st.
The 21st.
Oh, yeah.
I looked at that as opposed to a holiday.
Can we bump it up?
Yeah.
If we could have it a week before even.
Like the 7th.
Okay. So how do I do that? Do I need to?
You, yeah, you have to notify the clerks, okay?
Well, we could take.
If you get a notice on the website too.
Yeah, but also kinda know that everyone else is bumping up their meetings too.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the 21st is not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so let me see about that.
Good.
Um, get us on the 24. This might take me somewhere. I'll go to Gail tomorrow.
Okay.
Three things for Gail. Okay.
So the 14th.
Making it to Thanksgiving.
Yeah, and mostly December 14th.
Because we have Sustainability Commission is at 4:30.
Oh.
We don't always get out at 5:30. But we get, I mean, we, we close to getting out at 5:30. But we meet at, um, in the EEOC.
Could we get with Alco too, and find out if like 6 o'clock would work, maybe? I mean, if we're gonna change the day, I guess we could change the time too.
Faye, where do you meet for the Sustainability Committee?
EEOC, City Hall, EEOC room.
Oh, okay.
At 4:30, as usual, at least.
We could meet there too, right? Right after your meeting.
Yeah, I would, that was already there, yeah.
Possible. Might save time for you and.
You have to tell me that.
Just as long as.
Hear them right away.
And then if we're pounding on the door, you'll have to quit.
Okay, do you wanna try to do that?
Yeah, I'll try to do that.
You'll have to check with Gail and with Drew and.
Drew.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. And find out if there are any other, are there any others on the schedule?
I am right out of Bend, yeah.
Okay.
Everybody's looking at the counter saying it's too close to Christmas. We need to bump it up.
We should jump out. Well, Faye already knows, but yours is set for the second Thursday.
Yeah, we're always second Thursday at that time.
Okay.
The only thing that normally happens sometime is the City Council, they have a meeting or something going to workshop or whatever.
My, my second Thursday is Aviation at 12, Cemetery at 3, Navy Sustainability at 4:30.
Yeah. Does it maybe?
Well, either someone else will get the meeting.
It's always been 4:30. We would probably still have it, because it's not that close to Christmas.
Or even the earlier in the week, you know, the 18th or 19th, even.
And also have your brother.
If we would have to.
Commissions and boards can get their members.
Okay, so let me, uh, it's gonna take a little work tomorrow. Try to get that going.
You can do it. We trust that you will.
Great. Okay, so, um, yeah, so subcommittee, Linda and Lori will just, just chat afterwards and pick a date that we can connect.
Okay.
Okay. Um, good, moving. City Council, no? Uh, any more commissioner comments?
We missed the, um, number eight.
Oh, I missed, you did.
We did, jumped ahead too.
Let's go back to National Women's Day.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
The ACLU speaker that I mentioned last month, uh, her name is Caitlin Teague. And Christina and I spoke to her last year, and she was giving us the legislative updates last year, especially on reproductive rights legislation in the Indiana House and Senate. So, um, she is the Reproductive Rights Director Advocate for the HDLU in Indiana. And I contacted her and asked her if she'd be willing to consider coming up here to give a talk about, about laws about reproductive rights. And she's very interested in doing that, but she can't come until after the, um, she could come for a Zoom meeting, but, but anyway, she can't come in person until after the session ends in the middle of March. So, um, and anyway, if we're doing International Women's Day in March, we wouldn't be interested in her anyway in, in, in March. But, um, and the League of Women Voters actually had reached out to her to begin with to ask her if she'd be interested in coming for a program of theirs. And then last month, I brought that here and asked if the commission would want to co-sponsor the, um, meeting along with the league. And, um, it would just, you know, she'd give a presentation. It could be afternoon or evening. It's up to, kind of up to the two organizations then, if you do wanna go ahead, ahead with this. But, um, and we had thought, the league had thought that it would be great, a great idea to try to have it at PNW and try to have a student organization co-sponsor it so that, you know, maybe we'd get some students there to hear the, the presentation. But the PNW at Westphal is really, their enrollment is really dwindling, and they don't have any student organizations that are even closely related to any subject that this would fit in. I mean, it's engineers, it's future engineers and it's things like that. So, um, there is a, an organization in the Hammond, um, PNW campus, but that's feminist, and this is the, that's in their name, the name of the organization, but they're not in Westphal. And so maybe that wouldn't work, but, um, still, if it was the league and the commission, that might be, I think, either organization, probably this one could, probably the commission could draw bigger audience, um, because you have a better mailing list for that. And, um, but if you're interested in doing that, I had not discussed payment with her, with the speaker yet. And that's, that's what I would do now. If you're, if you're interested in doing this, I could find out if, you know, what, what they would, if they would wanna get paid for mileage or something and.
What's her name, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Caitlin Teague.
Her name is Caitlin Teague, T-E-A-G-U-E.
And Caitlin with a K.
With a C.
With a C.
Can we just pull that last name again, please?
T-E-A-G-U-E.
So it's C-A-T-L-Y-N?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. But she's the, um, she actually lobbies every day of the session. She's in the State House, she said, so. And, and, but she's also aware of all of the laws throughout the country too. So it would be interesting to hear, you know, what she has to say. And it's not only abortion, it's, there are a lot of, we had a lot of legislation last year regarding contraceptives and just all kinds of reproductive rights issues that, um, we need to be, women need to be aware of. Everybody needs to be aware of, of, um, what kind of restrictions are coming down the line, or are being considered at least, so that we can, um, be educated about those and respond to that.
I think that's a great idea to co-sponsor with the league, and might that be a possible, um, August program with the
August program.
Women's Equality Day.
Excellent. Women's Equality Day. Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's a very, very good idea.
That would be in August, right?
Okay.
Now, it'd be enough advance to get a book.
Yeah.
Book it with her. Is the legislature not even meeting then?
No, they're not meeting that.
That would be the easy.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, and that's when the commission.
It's a great idea. That helps. That, again, that makes it easier for the commission to handle just two events versus adding a third one, which when we tried to do that, it didn't happen.
Yes, yeah. And we haven't had an event for, well, we had our fundraiser, you know, a year ago in August, but for Women's Equality Day, August 26th, but the, uh, which is the anniversary of the, of the women's suffrage, so.
And we just did a proclamation this past year, so.
Yes.
And no programs of this.
We always do something, yeah. The commission always does something every year for August 26th. And for many, many years, we had luncheons at Lubesnik Center, you know, with speakers. And quite often, they were legislators and speakers from Indianapolis, actually. So this would be right along with that.
Yeah, that would.
Yeah.
So are you going to, um, check with the league then to see if that would be something that they would like to do?
Yes, yes. And I'm fairly certain it would be. I mean, it really, because they always like to try to do something too, but the Women's Commission's always done a bigger event than what the league has done in August every year, so.
Yeah, but partnering with them would be good to figure that out financially and stuff.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
All right.
Uh, good. Thanks for keeping me on track. Commissioners' comments now.
I would just like to say that the NWOCP Drive In Together Conference was awesome.
Yay. Everybody said that we did an awesome job.
Nice.
You got one.
I did get one.
Everyone said we did an awesome job, and they really enjoyed it. And, um, we elected a new president for this upcoming conference. Barbara Bowden Williams stepped down after 20 years of being the state president. And, um, so Sadie Hopper Scott is gonna be our new, uh, president. And, um.
So a lot of women leadership there.
And the Sustainability Commission put a full page ad in to help us. We have a couple of members that, um.
The league put in a little ad.
I couldn't.
Well, we paid for it.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
I didn't see.
Just a little business card in size.
Oh, okay. Okay, anyway, just our new president for the, uh, the state conference.
Where is she from?
Jeffersonville, is it?
She's from downtown, I know that.
Where is she?
How many people?
Lafayette.
How many people were there?
Yeah, yeah. She's a president of the Lafayette branch. And anyway, it was really nice. This soul food dinner and the public mass meeting was awesome. And everyone commented that it was one of the best ones that, that we've had in our state. So we got kudos. So the team was a very good team. Everybody worked together real well. Got a lot of ads. Um, we haven't done our final to see how much we made, because the only money we got was from the ads and the, um,
Dinner.
The ads and the soul food dinner.
That's a beautiful brochure.
Thank you.
Very professional.
You had to do that lovely, yes.
No, we had it actually done in Hammond, Young Man in Hammond.
It's quite nice.
But, um, but, yeah, and, and I think they did an awesome job, because the state kept making changes at the last week to, to the program. And the speakers and whatever stuff just kept happening. And so, and they were changing.
There it is.
There we go.
Yeah, vote 411.
So we got a lot of support from the community, which is very nice, and we really appreciate that.
We could have taken out an ad, but couldn't we have the Women's Commission?
We mentioned it a couple of times, but we never did pass it. Never did say, yeah, okay, so. So, but that, but still, you guys still have been supportive of helping us anyway, so.
I think.
We came through real, real well for us. They gave us, um, t-shirt, uh, Blue Chip gave us t-shirts. You know, anyway, gave us cups that changed colors, and it gave us, um, mints, and it gave us, um, some other stuff. They, they really helped us a lot. And, um, we had nice little bags. The Lakewood County Business Bureau were very good and supported us. They, um, helped, they gave us the bags. Now, I was gonna bring the bag, but I forgot it. They, uh.
So it's just a goody bag?
They, they had a cover on it, and we had, on the front had their logo and our logo. And they actually paid for them though, so that was, that was the good thing. So.
You brought a lot of people into the community that maybe hadn't been here before, right? I mean, maybe a lot of people had never been here before.
Right, well, had a lot of people came to, uh, our youth showed up. I didn't know that they had, we had as much, many youth as we did, because the youth was like, we were at PNW, and then like in another section, and we were in the Dawkins Center. So we didn't get to see them, but they went and helped at the Salvation Army as their community project. And they also, they enjoyed that. So now they're gonna start asking to help at the Salvation Army as their community project. So they learned, uh, major seminars gave them, told them about the history of the Salvation Army and all of that, and about Michigan City. You know, Michigan City, Salvation Army does a lot of projects, you know? The angel tree and the food and their own clothes, and they do a family night once a month. They do a lot of stuff. So, um, I couldn't even keep up. I didn't know as all the stuff that the Salvation Army does in Michigan City. So, but that, that's my comments.
Yes, excellent. Congratulations on such good work. Anyone else? All right, so next meeting date, we're gonna find out in January. We'll have a December date.
Tentatively the 14th.
Tentatively the 14th, and I will try to let you know that as soon as possible. Head over there tomorrow. So, um, motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Second.
Um, favor? Great. Yes. Motion is adjourned, our meeting adjourned, 6:55.
Five.
Five, there we go.
All right, good.
Great.
Claire?
Thank you.